Good afternoon, everyone. Today is Tuesday, January 24th, and the time is 5:30 PM. We're here for the regular session of the Capella City Council. There is a quorum present, so I call the meeting to order. As a reminder, persons wishing to speak during our citizens' appearance must sign the appropriate register outside the council chambers and list your home residence address. We will be convening into executive session in the first-floor conference room. At the conclusion of the executive session, I will come back out and announce our work session, at which time the public will be invited to join us. Thank you very much. Good afternoon again. The time is 6:05 PM. We have adjourned from executive session, and we're moving into work session in the first-floor conference room, and the public is invited and welcome to join us. All right, the time is 6:06, and we're moving into work session. The first item on the agenda is discussion of the agenda item. Anybody have anything on tonight's agenda that they would like to discuss, talk about? Consider agenda included. Be it you.
Thank you, Mayor. So the item number D.
Consider agenda D?
Yeah.
Okay, resignation of Ed from the board?
Yeah. So I just have maybe a question for Ashley. At this time, the alternate member position will stay vacant. I mean, do we have other members who can get into the alternate position?
That's part, at the time, the position will not be vacant.
No, my question is, do we have other people who got interviewed, right? So they can elevate it to the alternate position?
You would have to appoint them.
Right.
So there's, I don't know how to say this. Right, go ahead.
Yeah, so from the interview process, I had all Texas City Secretaries, obviously, we interviewed and exhausted the list of the applicants at that time, and there was there was no additional people that had been interviewed and not selected, so we'd have to go back to the original list. But we're okay with that alternate position remaining vacant until interview time again, unless council desires to to appoint somebody in that vacancy.
The reason I asked, when me and Mark interviewed, we ranked the people who was not selected at that time, so they can elevate it to the alternate position.
Yes.
The people who are in the position to the vacant position. So we don't have anybody at that level.
Not that was interviewed. There may still be people on the on the application list, but everybody that was interviewed was appointed.
Thank you. Seeing no other questions, we move to item B, which is a presentation by the City of Capella's financial advisor, Mr. Jason Hughes.
Mayor, council, it's good to be with you tonight. So on this kind of dark and wet and gloomy day, I've got to talk about something exciting.
Exciting.
Credit ratings. Thank you so much. So I'll try to go through and be brief, but certainly would invite any questions you may have. And what was passed out by Kim is the exact same thing that's on the screen up there. So what I'll start is just by going through and talking a little bit about the use of debt and some considerations that go along with that, and then I'll go from there straight into the credit profile and talk about what S and P and Moody's, how they rate the City of Capella. So one of the things that I always like to start with is there are always alternatives to debt, and I certainly don't want to ever be seen as pushing debt or saying that that's the only way to solve a financial problem, because certainly not. But along with those alternatives, there's usually considerations that go along with that. So as you can see there, a couple of things that you can do instead of issuing debt, use of cash reserves, and certainly that can be helpful, particularly if it's for one-time projects, maybe even larger projects. One of the things, and I'll tie this in here in a minute with the credit rating presentation, is from that perspective, you have to be mindful that if you are spending out those reserves, that you still maintain a reserve-level commiserate with your AAA credit rating. Another thing that can be done is the deferral of purchases and improvements. Certainly, if you go back to 2008, 2009, 2010, and that's certainly something that I had a lot of my clients did, is they slowed down or even stopped those improvements. And that can certainly help in those times of economic stress. Again, one of the considerations there is if you do that, does that deter future growth, or does that somehow deter revenues that you would otherwise get? And obviously, what we've seen within the last two to three years with inflation is now those things cost more, so the higher cost aspect is certainly something to consider as well. The pay-as-you-go, that's one of the things that used to be a lot more used in Texas, and obviously, as our budget slasher has constrained what you can do, particularly on the M&amp;O side with SB2, most recently, that's something that's not necessarily available, certainly not for larger projects. So and the other thing, too, is even if we could still do that, I think a couple of things that sometimes kind of get glossed over is you're not able to leverage the cash flow, right, because you're not able to spread it out over time. And then the other thing is you would be putting all the cost on the current user and not the future user. So if you sit there and think whether it's parks, whether it's trees, things of that nature, typically, those are long-term assets that will be used minimum 20 years and usually more like 30 to 40 years. And so that can certainly, again, put that onus all on the current user. One thing I do recommend to my clients is if you have larger expense items or larger capital items, just pass a reimbursement resolution. All that simply allows you to do is if you pass it, then you can reimburse yourself in the future from tax-exam processes. Doesn't lock you into doing that, it just offers that flexibility and that option to do that if you decide to. As far as potential advantages in issuing bonds, one of the nice things that we have the ability to do is we can finance different projects over different periods of time. And just to give you an example, if you were financing technology related to police, for example, you can finance that over a five-year basis. If you were building, you know, whether it's water utilities or something like that, building infrastructure, then you could do that over 20 years. So we have that flexibility within a single issuance to amortize those projects over a different time period. Obviously, you can finance those larger projects on a more timely basis, because you can get the dollars in for 100% of the project today, as opposed to, again, trying to kind of do that over a period of time. One of the things that in some ways may seem kind of counterintuitive is by issuing debt, it actually helps minimize the impact on your, whether it's property tax or user rate payers, because, again, you're spreading that repayment component over a period of time. And then, as I talked about on that previous page, the future beneficiaries are paying their fair share. So again, a lot of times, you know, you may hear, particularly if it's criticism, that debt's like a credit card, and it's really not. It's much more akin to a home mortgage, where, again, typically, whenever you're issuing debt, you're purchasing or building assets that'll be around for 20, 30, or 40 years. One of the nice things, if you're issuing debt, and if it is for a public purpose, then you can issue tax-exam debt. And all that simply means is the buyers of that debt, the interest earnings that they receive off of that, they don't have to pay federal income tax off of it or on it. So the nice thing about that is they're willing to take a lower interest rate than they otherwise would. So just as an example, right now, if you were to issue 20-year level debt, that's around a 3.4% to 3.5%. So even though we've seen interest rates, in particular, starting last year, long-term rates, that is, go up, we're still very low, again, to 3.5% for 20-year debt. And then the last thing is by issuing debt, that allows you access to revenues during your INS tax rate. And so that interest and sinking fund, or again, the INS tax rate, as it's known, is only allowed for the repayment of debt service. So those are just a couple of things as it relates to debt, kind of looking at those. So let me move into the credit rating portion. So let me talk a little bit about what a credit rating is and what it is not. And a credit rating in its simplest form is just a third-party's opinion on your ability to repay your debt. And you see there, it talks about default and things of that nature. Basically, you're looking at your ability to repay debt in a timely basis. What's more important in some ways is it is not a recommendation to buy, sell, or hold a security. In specific to the city, it is not advice. So one of the things the rating agencies always make very clear is they do not provide advice, they do not provide levels for you to achieve, they have their third-party metrics, which they take the information from you, and how they come up with your credit rating. But if you go to them, and I've been in meetings before with clients, where someone will ask, well, what should our fund balance be? How much debt should we have? They are, they won't answer it, and it's, again, kind of turned back, these are our measurements, we do not provide that advice. So that's one important thing to know. As you can see there, again, you're AAA rated by Moody's and S and P, we don't use Fitch, and that's simply more of a function, we only need two credit ratings to sell debt, so we don't incur an extra cost by using Fitch. S and P assigned the AAA credit rating back to you in September of 2008, so you've had that for about 15 years now. Moody's in June of 2013, so about 10 years. And I can tell you, another thing that we used to struggle with with Moody's is you were a smaller AAA from a tax-based perspective than their other Triple As, and we finally got them over that hurdle again in June of 2013. So let me talk a little bit about how Moody's and S and P come up with their credit ratings. Again, going back to 2008, 2009, some of the things that came out of that, you may remember Dodd-Frank Act, things like that, where basically, some of the things that led to that great recession were corrected as best they could be, or tried to. And so that's one of the things that Moody's and S and P tried to do, is inject some transparency into their credit ratings. And so what they do is they go through what they call a scorecard, and in that scorecard, they try to have, again, an objective look and a quantifiable look at your credit. And so you can see there that they take credit factors, and some of those still are subjective, but they'll assign a score to it, and then they'll have scores for all of these factors that go from highest to lowest. And then on top of that, each score gets a weighting, and I'll talk about that here more in just a second. But then what that effectively does is it gives them a score that leads to a total, and then that kind of spits out their initial credit rating. I say initial, because as you can see there, that last bullet point, the scorecard is not the rating. It gives the basis for the rating, then you can have what are called notching factors that get you to the final rating, and then ultimately, the rating is determined by a credit committee. So again, the scorecard is what helps you get to that point. S and P has had the same scorecard essentially since 2013. They have five primary factors, you can see there from left to right, economic fundamentals, that would be things like your tax reset valuation, your household incomes, things like that. Capella scores very highly on those, that's 30% of the credit rating. Your institutional framework is basically your ability to control your revenues and control your expenses, and that generally rests with what the state allows you to do. So every city in the state of Texas has the same institutional framework score. That institutional framework makes up 10%. You see there, the financial metrics, so liquidity, performance, and flexibility, all of those, those make up 30%. So if you notice, finance and economy make up 60% of that overall credit rating. Financial management assessment makes up 20%, and that is basically, do you have policies? Are they reviewed annually? Are they formalized, things of that nature? So that makes up that 20%, and that is certainly something that has become much more important, I would say, within the last five years or so. And then that very last, on the far-right-hand side, debt and liabilities, debt and liabilities, if you will, is OPEB and pension. So those, debt, pensions, OPEB, 10% of that. So that all goes, again, as you see there, those five categories into that indicative rating. Then you can see that there are what they call notching factors that help come to that final credit rate. And again, that final credit rating is still subject to credit committee review and approval. So Moody's scorecard, a little bit different, as you see there, they have four main factors, economy and tax base. And again, you see there, the breakout there, 30% on the overall economy and tax base, financial performance, and that includes fund balance ratio, liquidity ratios, again, 30%. So even though they do have a little bit difference, the economy and the financial aspect make up 60% of their overall rating as well. Their institutional framework, as you can see there, just like S and P, they basically go back to the state of Texas, and what the state of Texas allows you to do from a revenue and expenditure perspective, that's 10%. And then one thing you'll notice is that their leverage is higher, so their leverage goes up, and actually, that should be, 60, 70, yeah, that's 30%. Okay, fair enough. So that does make up a significant factor, or higher factor, if you will, on Moody's than it does on S and P. They have the same thing, where those four main categories feed into the indicative credit rating, and that gets to the final credit rating. So let me go through, S and P's a little bit easier, and again, they've had their methodology out for a longer period of time. So let me kind of quickly go through and touch on the four main factors for Capella from S and P. So economic fundamentals, again, per capita income, taxable assessed value per capita, things like that are what factor into the economic fundamentals. You score very high, and in fact, I'll wrap here in a minute and show you some of the actual data, but very, very high, so that is very strong and helps lead to that AAA credit rating. Financial indicators, as you can see there, general fund balance, which you have a very healthy general fund balance, unrestricted cash reserves, things of that nature, as you can see there, again, very healthy. One of the things, if you look down at the bottom right-hand corner, a lot of times, as you read through the credit rating reports, they'll use language very strong, strong, adequate, et cetera. As you can see there, in particular, on economic and the financial indicators, the language that was used was very strong. So I talked about the management assessment, and that, again, for policies, and those policies being in place, being reviewed annually. As you can see there, you have many codified financial policies, there's regular monitoring at different floors, things of that nature. They like seeing this, they like seeing planning, they like that you, council, are abreast of what's going on in the city on a financial and operating standpoint. A lot of your information that you get to is monthly, so you're kept up to date, so you also have very detailed, long-term financial and capital plans. That's another area that I will tell you, within the last three to five years, has become even more important. And the one thing, to kind of step back for a moment, the one thing I will say, too, about Capella, so I've worked with the city since roughly 1998, 99, you've always run yourself as a AAA city. And I think that's different from some cities that basically look at this and say, well, we aspire to be AAA, so we're going to make these changes. The city ran itself as a AAA city before it was ever AAA, and that's something that, at least, again, since I've been here, has been broken and systemed, and that's something that's been recognized by the rating agencies. The last one, debt and liabilities. And so if you see, this is, this is kind of in the middle, that's nothing bad. One thing that you'll see a lot of times, I talked about the strong, very strong, et cetera, language. For my clients in Texas, I would say that 90 to 95% of them, whenever you get to debt and liabilities, the language used there is either weak or very weak. And part of that is Texas is an easy state to issue debt in. You have a lot of control as it relates to being able to issue GO bonds, which are voted, COs, which are not voted, things of that nature. So you have a lot of control as it relates to other states. As such, generally, Texas cities carry more debt, and that's a, that's a general statement, obviously, but they carry more debt than most other states in the union. So again, just by virtue of this being in the middle and not being over on the far-right-hand side and being very strong, it's not a bad thing. And even as you see there, even with that, there is a AAA credit rating that you have. Yes, there's a question.
I remember from a previous presentation that, I believe it was you, said that even though you may not be doing this, they look down upon you as an entity because the state allows you to do it. Is that part of the?
So it's not that they look down at you, but one thing you have to remember is whenever you look at a AAA credit rating, a AAA credit rating should be the same for Capella, Texas, as it is for Portland, Oregon, or as it is for Portland, Maine. So in that regard, again, your debt is going to skew higher than other states. So within their, within their methodology, they take that into account by putting those metrics in there that, again, will skew higher than others. But you have things, too, again, think about like the institutional framework, if you go to California, Colorado, for example, they don't have as much local control on what they can do with their revenues. They get dinged for that.
Right.
So while, yes, Texas as a whole may have more debt, there's other things that are certainly offsetting factors for that.
Thank you.
So one of the questions that I often get is, well, why is AAA really matter? You know, if we were something else, what would that do? And so, as you see here, this goes through credit spreads, and this is compared to a AAA, and then you see there, the blue is a double A. The, is that red on colorblind? I think that's red, so we'll go with red. The red is the A level, and then I think green is the triple B level. So what happens is there is a spread between your AAA bonds and your double A. So said another way, if I'm an investor, if I'm buying double A bonds, since it's not as highly rated, I'm going to ask for more yield, right? So it's going to cost more for that debt. So this just goes through, and one of the things that you can see there, a double A GO, which is still very highly rated, that spread component changes over time. And so as you can see there, this goes back to January 2008, and it was probably somewhere around 10 basis points or 1/10 of 1%, whereas now it's closer to about 3/10 to 4/10 of 1%. So said another way, it gets more expensive if you lose that AAA credit rating, and that's certainly something that it's not just expensive on one bond issue, but if, as you issue bonds and continue to issue bonds, you're incurring extra debt service as compared to if you were a AAA. So that's certainly something to keep in mind, and not that you've, again, you've had those AAA credit ratings for 10 and 15 years, respectively, so you've been very strong. But that is, again, sometimes I get someone that, well, has the question, well, what does this really mean? And so that's, I think, it's higher cost ultimately for going out for capital financing. So let me, just a last couple of slides, so as you can see there, as far as the sector outlooks, S and P is stable, Moody's is stable for local governments, Fitch actually shows deteriorating. Fitch does not follow a scorecard approach, they follow more of a, kind of a worst-case scenario, what could the city withstand? And not specifically in Capella, because we don't have their credit rating, but that's what they look at. As you can see over on the left-hand side, there's some of the metrics that were included here, and again, this is against S and P's median for AAA cities, so per capita income, very, very high, market value per capita overdoubled what you see for those median AAA cities, your general fund balance, very healthy, your liquidity, just the governmental funds, cash, very healthy. The one thing, fixed charges, what those are is debt service, pension, and OPEB contributions as a percentage of total governmental funds. So again, right in line with those medians. You're in rarefied air, because as you can see there on the right, S and P only has 9% of their overall ratings for Texas cities are AAA. The vast majority are in kind of that double A category, so again, only 9% there. The last one really is just kind of talking through some of the unknowns that are out there right now. As most people know, that Fed funds target has been increased the short-term borrowing rates by the Fed as they try to fight inflation. And so generally, as that happens, would they increase that, they make money more expensive, and effectively, they're trying to slow down the economy. And there can certainly be repercussions with that. So right now, it's a little bit of a unknown. I know whenever they first started raising rates, they kept talking about the soft landing, because what the idea was is they would raise rates, slow down the economy, tame inflation, but they could basically land it in the sweet spot, which is they want 2% roughly inflation per year. And so we'll see if they get there or not. So a lot of questions out there about what that actually looks like. The inflation numbers are coming down, that's good. The next Fed meeting is January 31st and February 1st, and at least right now, what's expected is a quarter of a 425 basis point increase to rates. Maybe that goes up to half a percent, so we'll kind of see what happens there. So the last thing that's included, and this is actually just in this handout, is I included the scorecard for both S and P and Moody's. S and P is the first one. You see on the left-hand side is the actual score, and I talked about you get a score, and there's that weighting that I went through between those main categories. And then, as you can see there, that bottom right-hand corner, it spits out the scorecard score, 1.4, then you move to the right-hand side, so you see there different scoring ranges, so you're firmly within that AAA category. The one thing I would point out on Moody's, it follows the same format, left-hand side is the actual scorecard for Capella, right-hand side is their indicated outcome. Remember I talked about that they have notching factors? Your indicated outcome is actually double A1, that's one notch lower than your AAA credit rating. But if you look over kind of the middle of the page on the left-hand side, those factors, we believe Moody's would apply, unusual strings related to budget or liquidity. And so certainly, some of the, you know, larger fund balances, things of that nature, actually increase that, so it's a positive notching up to that AAA credit rating. So I know I went through that very quickly, but I'd certainly be happy to answer any questions or go into more detail as you want.
Don, are you going to call on me automatically?
You were. I can ask Kim a question. You mentioned, actually, you mentioned pension liability, or there was going to be an intention. Do we have a defined benefit pension, or we, or what is, do we have a liability, the word being?
So we contribute to Texas's municipal system, and that, as a, so they're a calendar year, so the last time that I have information is December 2021, and we were 89.1% funded.
Okay. I was just curious, since you brought that up, that that was going to be some attention on that?
Right.
I guess in general, right, for all cities?
Absolutely. And you look at the market in general in 2022 and 2023, we'll kind of see where that goes, but yes, there is going to be, I have understood, an increased scrutiny of that.
So if you said we're 89% funded?
And the year before, we were 88%, so we contribute whatever they tell us we need to contribute.
Okay, so we're, it sounds like we're in a decent position.
You wouldn't want to be 100%.
Yeah, we're in decent position from that standpoint. Okay, I was just curious if that was going to be a risk. That's all I got.
Thank you. Anybody else? Hi, just a general question, is there anything that I'm sure you've had this discussion with Kim and Mike, is there anything that we should be doing that we're not doing?
I don't know that there's anything that you're doing that you shouldn't be. I mean, I think the city, again, is very good as far as planning and looking at long-term, and not just, I do have clients, without mentioning any names, that are more kind of, well, we've got to issue debt, let's issue debt, and we won't worry about anything else. And that's probably one of the main things that I see right now. Capella's never done that. And in fact, Kim and I were talking earlier before the meeting about looking at some analysis of what the next bond issuance looks like and kind of carrying that into the future. So Mayor, I can't think of anything that I would recommend. Again, you always run yourself as a AAA city, going back to when I first started working.
Oh, you're welcome to come sit in on our workshop this weekend, because we're going to be talking a lot more about this, so.
I'll sit in, boy.
That's not happening.
I didn't mean to scare you.
No, that's okay. I know he won't come.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. And by the way- Um, and by the way, on our, uh, weekend, we will be talking about future modeling and debt modeling, and this is all tying in together. And in case you can't tell, our planning for next year has begun, so just, it's going to be for the next nine months. Um, all right. Item C is discussion regarding cashless transactions at city facilities. Ms. Tien and Ms. Carpenter. Welcome.
Thank you. So good evening, Mayor Council. Jessica and I were asked to provide you, oh, do I have to do it? Yeah, I'm sorry. Okay, sorry. So, uh, we were asked to provide you with some additional information concerning cashless operations at city facilities. And so this evening, um, I would like to share with you some, um, information on why various city facilities, uh, have or will transition, uh, to cashless operations, uh, and then what steps are we currently doing as well as how are customers paying? So the, the move to cashless facility was to address two areas of concern. The first area of concern is safety, so safety concern for both employees and customers. The other area of concern is around fraud risk. And for example, um, you know, there's a lack of, of safety net against allegations of theft. So when there's a cash shortage, it's, it's hard to determine whether it was an error or whether there was theft. And then there's also a risk of receiving counterfeit, um, money. Uh, so to address these concerns, staff did discuss various ideas, um, and those ideas included, uh, going completely cashless and accepting only cards and checks, considering cat, cat, uh, contactless or mobile method, uh, payments, uh, payment methods. Uh, and then we also, um, during this time, talked about the Art Center opening it as a cashless facility, which it did. We did discuss creating, um, one single cashiering site for the city. However, we just felt that that was a, a really large inconvenience. If somebody was on the west side of town and they wanted to pay cash, to have them have to come over to this side of town to pay cash, um, just seemed like a, a huge inconvenience. So now that I've shared with you what led us to consider the cashless operations, uh, Jessica's going to share with you some information on the various community experience facilities.
So Kim kind of give the why behind why we began to discuss transitioning to cashless operations. So I'd like to let you know what the Community Experience Department, formerly Parks and Recreation, is doing currently and has done in the past. Uh, so in 2016, we began discussing the transition to cashless facilities and, uh, this really at that time only impacted our adult athletics concession stand. So this was serving our adult kickball and our adult softball leagues. Um, in 2017, we followed this by, uh, moving the outdoor pool snack shack at the core, which is the outdoor entrance and concession stand. Um, so this entrance again is only open during the outdoor pool season and smells, uh, sells small concession items. Uh, then in June of 2020, the core reopened after their COVID closure, and at this time they reopened, uh, completely cashless. And in October of 2020, again, per the recommendation from the fraud assessment audit, the Art Center also opened as a cashless facility. Uh, and then fast forward here to 2023, in January of this year, the Senior Center and the Tennis and Pickleball Center transitioned, transitioned into cashless facilities. So all of these transitions happened extremely smoothly with very little negative feedback from our customers. So staff continued to track comments as well as instances where customers show up, uh, with only cash as a payment method. And these have happened, they're extremely rare. Um, week before last, we did have somebody show up to the tennis center with cash only and really wanted a Snickers bar. And so it kind of gave us an opportunity to create a, a great customer interaction, uh, with how we handle that situation. So we're trying to approach that, uh, really common sense and create great, uh, customer options. So if a staff does, uh, a customer does show up with cash only, uh, we just remind them for the next time they come in that we are a cashless facility. So how can customers currently pay at our facilities? So all facilities accept personal checks, cashier's checks, and of course, credit and debit cards. And those are a large amount of our transactions. And then the core, the senior center and the tennis and pickleball center also accept another payment method that we have branded as active cash. And so this is a gift card option that you can, we can use through our registration system that services these three facilities specifically. So the customer can go online to an online porter, portal and actually preload money onto their account to be spent at those three facilities like cash. Uh, they can also do that standing in front of a, a city staff member as well. We can also take their payment method and preload their account for them. And I'll pass it back to Kim, which will kind of talk about how customers are currently paying.
So I thought it was important, uh, to take a look and, and share with you how customers are currently paying at all of our facilities cumulatively. And you can see on a cumulative basis, we are receiving 6% um, of our payments are in cash, uh, and then 27% of our credit cards, and then the rest are, is other. And so that would be bank drafts, um, that would be online payments, uh, checks, primarily bank drafts and checks is what's in your other. So a very small, um, uh, segment of our population is paying with actual cash. And with that, we're happy to answer your questions.
Counsel? I had, I had one question. Jessica, I think it was you.
Sure.
What happened to the person that wanted the Snickers bar?
Um, so we went ahead and let him have that Snickers bar and just said, hey, next time you're in, if you could, uh, just remember that we're a cashless facility. And actually, that customer actually did come back and paid us a nickel or two later. Uh, so, yeah, trying to create a great customer interaction, but, um, they still returned and paid for it, so.
John, thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation, um, both of you. Currently, how many facilities do we accept cash?
Um, about two.
Two, and those are?
I can't tell you. I, I don't want to tell you in an open setting who's accepting cash.
Okay.
For safety reasons.
Okay. Okay. Is there additional cost in accepting cash other than the manpower that might be required to transport, because the cash or even you looking at it or keeping it safe?
Right. And so there, there's, there's things that we need to be, that are purchased to take cash. And so if we have facilities that aren't set up right now to take cash, there's cameras because we have cameras at the facilities, particularly in the areas where cash is taken. Um, also, uh, they need to have a safe. Um, and so what else there, I mean, cash boxes, uh, and then the cost to, to.
And then the cost to.
I guess facilities that we currently accept cash, what type of issues has come up, um, that might make us think about going cashless versus the current places that were accepting cash, or cashless, that were not facing the type of issues that we faced before when we were accepting cash? Does that make sense?
So, um, when the core was taking cash, uh, we've received counterfeit money at the core. Um, the core, believe it or not, has received counterfeit money. Um, so those are a couple of, of areas that we've received counterfeit money. And then, um, just theft of money has occurred at various facilities in the forms of cash.
And what would be the reason that we're still accepting cash in those facility that still does accept cash?
Right. So thinking through organizational change, right, when you're looking at changing something, um, what I like to do and kind of what we do with the water project is you roll things out slowly so you get people used to transitioning to that. So, um, our core facilities and those were some of the lower, uh, places where cash was, was the method that people were using. And so transitioning of the smaller group and then slowly transitioning all of the facilities, just so that you're just trying to ease people into change.
And I, and I know, I know you talked about some percentage wise as to what the, I guess the, the percentage of people that are paying by cash might be still, you know, low. So the idea is if we don't accept cash, and I understand there's checks, but if we're asking them to pay by credit card, the, as the fee that's being assessed for the credit card, credit card fee, there's still going to be response, they still have to pay for that, is that?
Under the current, uh, master fee schedule, that is correct. And that, that, that's a policy. So if you changed that, that would, but under the current policy, yes.
And how hard is it for the facility that we convert to cashless to go back and accept cash as an option?
I'll let Jessica adjust that.
Right. So some of the facilities that currently are not taking cash, like Kim mentioned, we have to purchase all of the safeguards put in place in order to take cash. So the, the camera systems, the cash door systems, safes, there is a cost to transport cash, um, as well.
Is that something we've already taken out because we want cashless or, or we had before or we just?
That's not something I think I can answer here in open session.
Okay.
Kevin?
Thank you so much for the presentation, first of all. Um, could you talk about some of the, uh, the feedback that we received about going cashless versus, uh, I, I'd love to kind of hear some of that.
Sure. And so again, very, uh, staff are tracking it, very little comments. Uh, I believe there were some comments when the, when the initial marketing first went out this round here in 2023. There were some questions as to why are you guys doing that? And so staff were able to kind of navigate through that. Um, and then since the, the transitions actually have occurred, we've received absolutely no complaints. Um, we have had just again, a couple instances where people have still come to the facility with cash and we created a good interaction and just reminded them for the next time. But I think the best story to tell is when the Art Center fully opened, opened as cashless in October of 2020, obviously the marketing included, hey, we're a cashless facility. And they have had not one single issue or comment at all since they've opened. They've had really no, nobody show up with cash only. Um, everybody's always had an alternate payment method, so, um, so that sent, that center is probably the best example of, uh, the seamless cashless issue.
I guess another question I have is, um, from my understanding, this plan was put into place before a couple of us were elected, um, and served on this as counsel. Um, as far as that counsel's recommendation to go this way, what was the main driver? Was it the, the personal safety of the staff? Was it, uh, handling of money? Can you speak to that at all?
So I was not involved in that executive session. That was handled in executive, so I don't know what the conversation was.
Understood. And obviously we can't breach anything from executive session, but I didn't know if there was a, if there was a public driver that's.
On top of the overall discussion, I see Brianna shaking her head because she was in there.
I know, I'm like.
There was also, you, you coupled what was happening with COVID. And so the marriage of those two issues kind of said, hey, this is kind of, this is where this is going. And that's why the speed, I mean, we haven't been in a ru- rush. We've just been doing it, you know, methodically, right? And as y'all observed, based on y'all's meeting and the communication standpoint, you can always get better, you know, in this case, you're right, for the seniors, change is difficult. And, um, even though there's a small percentage that use cash, you know, they're vocal. And so, um, that's why we're here, um, to present this. Thank you for, for sharing.
How many other cities, surrounding cities went all cashless? You?
So, um, but we are, we are leading this. Um, Flowermount and Addison have both contacted us because they are interested in pursuing a cashless, cashless facilities also. So they're, they've been calling and asking what steps are you doing? How are you maneuvering this? So they're, they're watching this.
Okay, but currently there is no other cities, surrounding cities that, that is 100%.
Not that responding to our inquiries, yeah.
Jessica, question, how did, back in 2016, how did, what was the, uh, criteria for picking the, uh, concession stand to go cashless? What, what was the driver there?
That was primarily a staff safety driver.
Oh, a what?
A staff safety driver.
Thank you.
All their activities were in.
I, yes, I can, and kind of out in the middle of the network, right? Counsel, any other questions? John?
Yep. So initially we, we're going to go cashless with the library, but we're not. And we don't, are we planning on making that cashless at some point?
So we put a pause on that for now. We do think that facility could have the opportunity to go cashless. Um, all of the, the marketing behind that, the, the whys and the whats and the hows was not released at that time, but we do feel like that facility at some point could go cashless.
Because copies are what, 10 cents?
Sure.
15 cents? And then I'm just wondering how that's going to work if they're doing one, two copies and we go cashless and how?
Right. So like you said, copies are 10 cents or less. So, um, it could create a great customer experience initiative to maybe say X number of copies for free, right? And if they are looking into printing 30 or 40 color glossy copies, probably the public library is not the best place to do that anyway. So if that is a, a service that they need, that is when maybe they would run a credit card and pay for it in that manner. Uh, but certain number of copies, I think that it's such a low amount and low impact that that would be a service that we could potentially offer free of charge.
And Jessica, the only cash is in their copy machines and in their, their coffee, how they buy.
Correct.
I just want that up there.
Yes, yes.
It's just, it's very minimal cash.
Very, very minimal.
We did, we did away with fines many years ago because those weren't very much.
Nope.
Those were a lot of your books. It was all you.
Anybody have anything else? Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Item D is discussion regarding the cancellation of March 4th, 2023 city council meeting. That is on the agenda tonight. We routinely give ourselves the option for not meeting during spring break. And since, as I was told, five of the seven, or five of the eight of us have kids in elementary or school, I'm assuming that it would be okay not to meet that night? Anybody have any burning desire to meet? Kevin?
Wait till you have the second.
All right. So that'll be, that is on the agenda tonight. Item E is a discussion regarding, uh, service organization funding. Kim?
It's going to be that.
My steps. Thank you again. Um, so this item is on the agenda because during the June 2022 budget workshops, council did express the desire to revisit the process used to evaluate requests from service organizations. And so in your packet, uh, included a memo from a council subcommittee that was created to evaluate the service organization's funding process back in August of 2016. So the current process is that prior to the budget workshops, new applicants, uh, uh, should be brought to a council work session for council to determine whether the applicant should, uh, be considered during the budget workshop when the service org's, uh, funding is considered. If council determines that they would like to consider the applicant, then the applicant will be scheduled, uh, to present at the service organization, uh, work, budget workshop. In addition, previously approved organizations requesting an increase in funding are also required to present to council. And so this evening, I am seeking direction concerning the process that you would like to use going forward. Um, would you like us to continue the process in place or would you like to change it?
So since my name is on the memo and I was one of the mentors that did this, let me give you a little bit of background. What we were doing before, Brianna and Mark and Cliff were subject to this, we were reviewing every organization every year. And it got to the point where, you know, we had X number of organizations that were asking for the same amount of money every year for the same reason, and nothing was changing. So Mayor Hunt, uh, appointed a, a committee to study that. And we did meet for a number of, of a couple of months and came up with this recommendation, which that council, uh, approved, and we've been following that ever since. It's completely up to this council to set whatever criteria, guidelines you want to adopt. Um, otherwise the, if we make no recommendation, this will be what we are going to, which, which is what staff will use as. which which is what staff will use as sure. This gives our staff the ability to vet or pre-review before it comes to the council and gives them some guidelines on how to approach new organizations as well. Brianna?
I think just to add to that, right, if there was a, if the same organization was coming, but they were asking for a different amount, then they would present, right? Like, so only if it was a repeat. If they had added before, nothing had changed. Yeah.
Mark? Sorry, I thought you had a question.
His head down, it's like at school.
No, he was grinning.
It's worked pretty good so far, right?
I mean, I read through it. I I couldn't. Based on where we were and where we were, where we are?
Yeah.
Yes, it's working well.
Is there a, if they ask for the same amount, and for some reason, I get, is there some mechanism where we could ask them to come in at some point, I guess? I mean, we could still always, even though the process, or how would that work for y'all? How would, logistically? Because you wouldn't, you wouldn't bring it to us beforehand, right?
Well, we are going to bring you in May a list because we open the service orgs that they're basically for the month of April, they get to turn in their applications if they are requesting grants. And then in May, we would bring to you, here's the list.
Okay.
And these are who, based on your policy, would present. And then if you wanted to add somebody other than based on your policy, that would be at your discretion.
Okay. I think that's a good plan. The only thing I hate to, I hate to just rubber stamp year after year after year and not have a mechanism in the case that we needed to review something. But it sounds like we're.
And you do indicate when the last time they did a presentation.
We can go on the on the form.
On the form. So you do get to see that.
I will tell you, there was some discussion during the development of those about whether we should automatically require them over three years or five years or seven years. And we decided to use it as on a as-needed basis.
I think that makes sense.
As-called basis.
So based on that, I would say the memo still seems like a pretty good framework for us to work under. John?
So when, say, new, I guess, new organization application, does the staff, I mean, how how is it determined that who gets presented at the work session or is it everybody?
So if they're new, they would they would present.
So it's not something that the staff would choose?
We do not.
Say you get to present?
Nope. And that would be part of the discussion in May when we show you everybody that's that has applied. You would you would see who was new and you would decide.
Kevin?
Just a point of clarification on this. If you've got a organization that has in the past repeatedly applied and, you know, they kind of fit the criteria and, you know, just kind of no changes. Let's say one year that they drop out and they don't ask for funding requests, and then they come back the year after, would that be treated as a new application? Or because there's history in the past, that would almost be like, we're good?
So we would bring it to you in May on the chart, and y'all could decide how you want to handle that.
Okay.
I'm good.
So I see no, I see no, I see no, no furrow brow. So what we'll do is we'll follow this through the through the year and just pay attention to the process in May when it comes time to do that. And if we need to make some adjustments, we can do it at that point and modify it for the future. This is a very, this is just an internal policy that we have complete control over. All right? Thank you very much. Thank you. Well, the time is 6:57, and we're at the end of work session. We'll move into the council chambers for the regular session of the Capella City Council, starting at 7:30 PM. Thank you, everybody, for presenting tonight. Last call for city council members. Councilmember Long, Councilmember Neves. Kevin and Mark. Good evening, everybody. The time is 7:31 PM, and we're moving into the regular session of the Capella City Council. Just as a reminder, anyone wishing to speak during the citizens' appearance must sign the appropriate register located outside the council chambers. Tonight, for our invocation, we have Reverend Beth Kellner of the First United Methodist Church, who is here to give us the invocation. And then we will recite the Pledge of Allegiance, so please remain standing. Reverend Beth?
Thank you. Let's join our hearts together in prayer. Loving God, gathered here this night, we know we have so much to give thanks for. Thanks for this day you have blessed us with and and all the wonderful opportunities you have given us. We give you thanks for this, for this wonderful rain that that is here to nourish our earth. We give thanks that you have given us the freedom to gather this night, to gather in this place, to to share in conversation, to discuss our community, to find ways to to serve you and to make this, make this a better place in which to live and work and play. So we ask that you continue to let your blessings flow over us, especially let your blessings fall upon our city council, all all those who who represent our city, upon our mayor, upon all those who will speak this night, let your blessings flow. May they truly hear what you are saying to them. May the conversation be civil. May the decisions be right and just. In all things, Lord, we do give you thanks. Amen.
Okay, item number six on our agenda is a recognition of Ed Guion for his years of service. I'd like to ask Ms. Jessica Carpenter of our Community Experiences team to come forward and bring all the necessary personnel. So, and I'd like to invite Ms. Guion as well. Now, you can't tell me that you didn't have at least a little bit to do with him being gone all the time.
Thank you. Ed, thanks for being here. Just one thing to know about Ed, he's an extremely humble guy. And so I think it took a lot of teeth pulling to get him here tonight. And I'm so glad that he was able to make it. We didn't really want to let this opportunity go by without recognizing one of our incredible community volunteers. So I prepared something so that I wouldn't cry through this. I am going to read my prepared statement. The Community Experiences Department, formerly Parks and Recreation, would like to recognize Ed Guion for over 12 years of service to the Parks and Recreation Board and the last several as park board chair. Ed has been an extraordinary member of the board with visionary leadership, insight, and a heart for service for the Capella community. Throughout his years in Capella, Ed has been involved in many things around town, including Living Well in Capella, and an active member of the Arts Council. During his service on the Parks and Rec Board, Ed has been involved with, take a deep breath because there's a lot, the rebuilding of the Kid Country Playground, the renovation of the core, the renovation of the Andy Brown Park system, the construction of the art center, the addition of many, many miles of trails to our system, countless projects, events, programs, and planning, and so much more. His support and guidance were critical to the department receiving a national gold medal in 2021. On a personal note, Ed is one of the kindest, most gracious, and selfless volunteers I have had the pleasure of serving with. Ed, I'm excited for you, your new adventures, but we'll miss you around Capella so very much. The Community Experiences Department would like to present you with this plaque honoring your service to the city of Capella. I would like to, do I need to pass it on to Mayor, or would you like me to?
We'll let Ed talk at the end. So Ed, I had a couple of things to say. When I first met you, you were acting like a crazy man here in the council chambers promoting Kid Country. And I don't know how anyone, at that point, I could not imagine how anybody could get so excited about going out and working until I saw you out there. And as I recall, you were manning the tool shed, and I had to check a power tool out from you, and you gave me a safety class on how to operate it. So as Jessica said, thank you for your many years of tireless service to the city. You've definitely made this place a better place to live, and we really appreciate your service. Counsel, any, Councilmember Neves?
Thank you, Mayor. No, Ed, I I know we were talking just kind of over there, but I just want to share some words. As I was starting to, you know, my journey into service with the city, I'd been involved with the Chamber of Commerce, and I was lucky enough to be involved with the Living Well in Capella Committee with you. And I will never forget how how well you conducted yourself in the meeting and how how professional you were, how courteous you were, especially to a young punk kid like me who's trying to learn his way around the city. And, you know, I will say that just watching you, I really modeled a lot of things on how to conduct myself in a in a public meeting. And just, I want you to know the example that you've set for so many people in this community. And I know I am personally grateful for everything you've done. And you've touched so many areas of this city, you will not be forgotten. So thank you so much for everything that you've done for Capella. We appreciate you.
Councilmember Brianna Hinohosa Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. I could list a whole bunch of things that we've done together. And whether it was living in Capella, or everything's parks, or everything city and community, your name always came up, or you were always there, and you always showed up. And so I just want to say thank you. Thank you for your your time, your commitment, your service, your passion, and just your love for this community because you've definitely left, you've you've left your your prints all over it. And so just sincerely want to say thank you.
Councilmember Carol?
Thank you, Mayor. Ed, thank you for what you've done for the city. I'm going to reiterate a little bit what everybody else has said. You are the prime example of what makes Capella great is your type of dedication and your type of service to this community and everything. And I think what I love the most is you always do it with a smile on your face. I have rarely seen you without a smile on your face, and that, I believe, is infectious and it's just, it just personifies your dedication to this community. So I appreciate it very much.
Mayor Protim Matthews?
Thank you, Mayor. Ed, thank you for your service to the city of Capella for the past 13 years. Personally, I want to thank you. You and me started on park board in the same year. And we just talked about that here at the at the at the chamber, right here today. And you personally helped me with many discussions when we had the Kid Country rebuilding project and also redesigning Andrew Brown Park, east and west and central. And we went through a journey at that time. And we presented that to the city council, and city council approved, and we issued the bond. And it's a reality today. And Jessica mentioned, we got the gold medal for the park for the city of Capella, under $50,000 for the entire United States. That's a great achievement. And you, your footprint is everywhere, like Councilmember Hinohosa Smith mentioned. So thank you for your service. We do appreciate as a city. I personally thank you for all the contributions that you have done to me in the past 13 years. Thank you.
Councilmember John?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have a whole lot to say because they've said so many things already for, you know, for me. But, you know, I just want to say thank you also, but also the Mrs. Because everything that you do, I know she supports you, and you cannot possibly do it without her permission, I would say. But, you know, every time I talk to people about Capella, I always I always tell them that we not only have abundant volunteers, but we have exceptional volunteers. And you're a perfect example as to what that stands for. And we're, you know, I'm really grateful that you've all given all your heart and soul into this city. And I know there's many, many places that you can, you'll be able to touch and make a difference as well. So thank you again.
Councilmember Hill?
Ed, I just want to thank you for your years of service on the park board. You know, your guidance there on the board has really made our life, the council members' lives, so much easier. You guys get into the minutia of these products, projects, and you sort it all out and you bring it to us with very good recommendations as to what we should do. And, you know, it's very easy for us to move forward then. And, you know, that that kind of leadership is is rare. And you have always done it with a smile, and your level of energy is just infectious. And, you know, I'm I'm proud to know you, and we're, everybody is going to miss you here in Capella. Thank you.
Councilmember Long?
Yeah, it's been a long ride, hasn't it? I, yeah, I remember when people were talking about you before I ever met you. I said, who is this Ed guy? And so I got to get to know him. And so, and this was long before I was on the council. And so we've had several projects together, which like the other folks have. And it's really been a pleasure serving with you. And I ditto what what everyone's saying about your attitude and the way you've handled yourself and the energy that you had in helping this city. It's difficult to go through this city and to see any structure or anything that doesn't have your fingerprints on it. So you, you know, you come to mind just about everywhere my wife and I go. And I'd say, you know, Ed was involved in that. So so we're going to miss you. You're going to Colorado, are you? And where are you, where are you going to be? Denver. Okay, that's the Front Range. Okay. That's the Front Range, okay. I was over on the Western Slope when I was out there, but a great place to be if you can't be in Capel. Thank you.
So, again, Ed, thank you very much, and as I understand, all three of your daughters just happen to live in Denver?
One daughter and two sons.
Okay, so.
But all three kids.
All three, oh, okay, I'm sorry, three kids.
And that's the reason for the move.
Well, I think we all understand that and can appreciate it, and thank you for your service. Jessica?
Ed, did you have any other comments you'd like to make?
Sure. Well, first off, thank you all for all your heartfelt comments. I absolutely appreciate it. I moved to Capel 38 years ago as a single guy, and at that time, the population, I think, was about 8,000. There was no grocery store in town, and every once in a while, driving in Sandy Lake from 35, there'd be cattle crossing the road. I mean, that's kind of where it was at that point. So, over the years, I have seen some tremendous growth, some tremendous changes, that's gotten us to where this great city is today. And I'll tell you, it's made a connection in my life like I can't tell you. As far as volunteering, I started doing that back in high school, but after raising our three kids here, I decided I wanted to give back to this community more, and so started doing that. I was lucky enough to be able to spend my volunteer time on things that I really had a passion for, which is why I was so crazily into it, like you say, Mr. Mayor. But, you know, whether it was mentoring kids, or, you know, parks and the great outdoors, or the arts, health and wellness, these things were all things that I had a personal passion for, and I wanted to do what I could in the community in those areas. But besides being lucky able to do that, I'll tell you, where I really was lucky was with the great people I met along the way. Regular citizens, people in organizations and other volunteers, my fellow board members on different boards I was a part of, the city staff, council, mayors. I mean, I'll tell you, those people are what made my volunteer work so enjoyable and so rewarding, and it's going to be the toughest thing to leave. But, you know, got good volunteers that are still in the community, on the Park Board and other places, that'll continue those kind of things on. People on the boards have heard me say many times, I have the highest regard for people who volunteer, who take time from their busy lives to come back and give to the community and help other people. And so, you know, I want to say thanks to everybody that's done that over the years, everybody that's continuing to do that, including council and the mayors. Appreciate the work you guys are doing as well. So, it's, you know, certainly I have some mixed feelings about moving away from the city and the people that I care about so much, but really looking forward to spending more time with our kids, and looking forward to finding new ways that I can contribute to the new community that we're going to move to. So, thank you all very much, and appreciate it, everybody on council, all the staff, Mr. Mayor, Mike, everybody. Thank you. Item number seven is a proclamation, and I'd like to invite Ms. Vicky Chavetta and Mr. Mike Land to join me down front. So, Vicky, you must have been busy, because this proclamation's kind of long.
I am busy.
And I'm sorry, but I'm going to read all of it.
Thank you.
We're here today to express our appreciation to Victoria, Vicky Chavetta, and honor her distinguished 14-year career with the City of Capel and her dedicated service to this community. And Vicky began her career with the city as an Assistant Library Director on January 5th, 2009, and was promoted to Library Director in 2010. During Vicky's tenure, she was instrumental in the 2015-2016 redesign, remodel, and rebranding of the library, resulting in a shift from focusing on books to focusing on people and being the heart of the community, where people can gather, engage, and learn, and grow. And on November 5th, 2018, she was promoted to Deputy City Manager and has served in that role since. These years of service have been marked by exemplary dedication to the best interest of the community and this organization. And Vicky has worked with two city managers, four mayors throughout her tenure, and was an integral part of the administrative team that helped develop and implement Capel's 4C success model, cultivating Capel core competencies, a game changer for the organization. And whereas, Vicky's also served in many ways, from contributing to professional associations and conferences, to local membership in the Rotary Club, and our own allies in the community. And whereas, on behalf of the entire City Council, I want to express my sincere appreciation to her for her loyalty to the City of Capel, and wish her much happiness as she begins this new chapter in her life. Now therefore, I, West Mays Mayor of the City of Capel, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, January 24th, 2023, as Vicky Chavetta Day in the City of Capel, and urge all citizens and employees to join me and the City Council in congratulating Vicky for her meritorious service, loyalty, and dedication she has rendered to this community. This is proclaimed this 24th day of January 2023. So, council, do you -- that was quick. Councilmember Brianna Hinojosa-Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve a proclamation designating January 24th, 2023, as Vicky Chavetta Appreciation Day, and authorizing the mayor to sign.
Thank you very much. And a second by Councilmember Neville's. All in favor?
Long, Kenojosa-Smith, Carroll, Neville's, John, Matthew Hill in favor. None oppose the motion carries.
Thank you very much. Vicky, the proclamation just mentions a bit of what you've done for us, and we can't thank you enough, and I sincerely look forward to you enjoying your retirement just as much as you've, we've enjoyed having you work here. Council, do you have any comments or things you'd like to say? Councilmember Hinojosa-Smith.
Thank you. Gosh, I mean, like the mayor just mentioned, the list really goes on and on, right? I mean, the proclamation only captures a snapshot of all the things that you have done and accomplished here, and you have truly been someone who has served with heart and courage, and just wanted to say thank you. Thank you for your years of service. Thank you for your passion. Thank you for everything that you've done for us. I think of, while there's been so many accomplishments, I remember going through the library expansion with you, and that was probably, you know, a huge project that we can, you know, all look at and say, you know, you definitely had a huge, or played a huge part in that. So, thank you for serving us as council members, and I do hope that you'll enjoy your retirement, but please know that you will be missed, and really appreciate all you've done.
Mayor Protem Matthews.
Thank you, Mayor. I also want to thank you, Vicky, for your service to the City of Capel for the past 14 years. We do really appreciate it. I have known you in both professionally here in the City of Capel, and also the service organization outside the City of Capel with the Rotary Club. Me and Vicky are the members of Rotary Club. She does a lot of wonderful things all over the place. Locally, she has done, took a leadership role, even last month, putting a gift basket for seniors in and around Capel through Metrocar Service, and we delivered the packets to them, and she was leading that through Rotary Club. And in Africa, we were doing a project in Africa, in one of the countries, in Tanzania. We were raised the fund to drill a well so people can drink water, and she was leading that project as well through the Rotary Club. So, we want to thank you for your service, not just the City of Capel, but through the community service that you provided to the City of Capel. Thank you.
Councilmember John.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, they said all the things that I wanted to say already, but I feel obligated that I need to say this, maybe for the last time. Some of them might not know, but I must call you Barb, and you know exactly what I'm talking about. This is my last chance to call you Barb, but it's an inside joke, but. But no, thank you so much for everything that you've done. I think I, first time I met you, it was in the library, and then I've seen you move on and to, you know, being a deputy mayor, deputy city manager. You don't want that, you don't get paid on that one. But no, I just want to say thank you again for everything that you've done, and it's been an honor knowing you, and I know you're going to have fun, so have, you know, enjoy the retirement.
Councilmember Long.
Vicky, one of my favorite people. We got to know each other at Rotary as well, long before I was on the council, and you were, you know, you were a great inspiration then, as you were when you, when I worked with you, or I've been working with you with the city. And so, the nice thing about it is that you have promised that you're going to stay in the Rotary Club here in Capel, so I will continue to enjoy your company into the future. So, I'm very excited about that. Great job.
Councilmember Carroll.
Thank you, Mayor. Vicky, I just, I could reiterate what everybody else says. I just appreciate your demeanor and your quiet leadership, and you're in a role and in a world where there can be a lot of emotion around different things. At times, you are even keel, and it's, you just take this approach, "We're going to keep the mission in mind, and we're going to find a solution to this," and you just move ahead, and I think that is a great attribute. When emotion at times needs to be diffused, let me put it that way. Thank you for doing that, and thank you for serving this community with that type of character and that type of demeanor. It's very, very, very much appreciated.
Councilmember Neville.
Vicky, I just want to say thank you for everything. I actually, I really agree with what Don just said, the way that you've led. I remember when I joined the council, and unfortunately, we've only had a chance to serve together for about a year and a half now, and I wish that time was longer, but, you know, I was thinking about, you know, our interactions, and I'll never forget the, you know, we shared kind of some quiet time outside of TML this past October, where we both found each other, like, outside, just kind of taking a breath and a break from all the craziness at that, you know, at that convention, and just, you know, getting to learn a little bit more about you and, you know, your plans moving on, and hopefully you're going to go on that cruise. Is that a plan? Yeah. So, yeah, but I just want to say thank you for everything you've done for the city. I know you made me feel really welcome when I came on to council, and really helped me and guided me, and, you know, got me up to speed, so I just want to say thank you for everything. The city's better for you being here. I just want to say thank you so much.
Councilmember Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. Vicky, it's been such a pleasure working alongside with you. You have such dignity and grace, the way you handle situations, and I've just really, really appreciate everything you have done for us. And, you know, when you made the transition from the library over to the City Manager's office, you made it look effortless. You know, I don't know if it was easy for you, and you just really get it, but man, you hit the ground running, and it was seamless. And that isn't easy, given all the tasks and things you have to undertake at that position. So, thank you for your service, and hope to see you around town.
So, as you were talking about her demeanor and her grace and everything, she's turning pink up here, so y'all are embarrassing her. Councilmember, Mr. City Manager.
Wow. I was mayor one day, city council. So, this Thursday, by the way, we have Vicky's reception, as far as her retirement reception. I asked her if she was coming in to work on Friday. She said, "Well, of course." But, you know, there's several things about Vicky that I just want to share. First of all, Vicky is one of the few that still laughs at my dad jokes. So, when she gets tickled, she really gets tickled, and she, so, she works, so, you know, all thumbs up there. Secondly, y'all are talking about her retirement. She informed us this week, I want to break HIPAA. She told us this week that Rosemond is having shoulder surgery. Say that three times fast. So, for the next month, all she's going to be doing is taking care of her husband. So, that's how she enters her retirement period. But we had lunch the other day, and we were talking about, and everybody had an opportunity to say something about Vicky, and, you know, one of the things that we talked about was the fact that not only is her demeanor really calm in terms of what's going on, but, you know, how she handles us in the office, if that's the right word to use, handles us in the office. You know, she is the calming factor for us in the office, and has been, since she joined us. And, you know, we're talking about the transition from over to the, from the library over to the Deputy City Manager's office, and I will tell you, the reason why she started laughing is because it was truly, you know, drinking out of a fire hydrant. But, you know, Vicky's been a tremendous asset for us, and she's done a great job for us and for the City of Capel. Her, I can't tell you how important it was on the 4C that was mentioned, because that was part of the foundation that continued to build on our culture, and Vicky and several others were just integral into making that happen. I asked her, you know, what she was most proud of, and we were talking, I was listening to all these things, and she goes, "Yeah, community allies." It's like, yes, that was her program, right, in terms of putting that together for the impact on this community. So, she's been involved in really important things as far as our culture, as our organization, and in our service to the city. So, Vicky, thank you. Now, I'm going to turn this over to you, so you can now.
Thank you so much. This really is a huge honor to me, and before I say too much more, I want to just tell a little story, kind of a story. This morning, I got a family group text from my sister, who lives in California, and she had sent the whole family a copy of this proclamation. And I thought, "Where in the world did she find that?" Because she's in California. So, I was looking at it, reading it, and a few minutes later, I got a response text from my brother-in-law, and he said, "It's a good day when you have a day named after you and you're still alive." So, thank you for proclaiming this day while I'm still alive. I appreciate it. But honestly, it's been my honor, it's been my privilege to serve in the community of Capel. I don't live here, but I do make it my home. I feel like it's my home. I have so many friends, and I know so many people here, and I feel like I just contribute, can contribute more to this community just because I have all of those connections. And it has been just a joy to work here. The citizens are so appreciative of all the things that we do, and the staff that we work with is amazing. It's the best staff that I've ever worked with. It's the best city I've ever worked for, and I am truly going to miss it. So, I will come back from time to time to haunt you, just to say hello, and thank you for everything. Thank you, council, for all the support that you've given me over the years. I really do appreciate it. Thank you.
Item number eight on the agenda is our citizens' appearance, and I do not believe that we have had anybody signed up to speak, so we're going to forego with the reading of all the ritual stuff. Item number nine is our consent agenda. The consent agenda is routine in nature and generally enacted in a single motion. These items have been previously approved by the budget or passed council action. Any item may be pulled and considered separately. Full descriptions are available on the screen. Council, is there any desire to discuss any item or pull one? Seeing none, I'll accept a motion. Councilmember Carroll.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve item number nine, A through E.
Thank you. A second from Councilmember Long. All in favor?
Long, Kenojosa-Smith, Carroll, Neville's, John, Matthew Hill in favor. None oppose the motion carries. the motion carries.
Thank you very much. Item number 10 is to consider cancellation of the March 14th, 2023 city council meeting due to the date falling during spring break. We routinely leave this as an option, but it does require a vote of the council. I'll accept a motion at this point. Councilmember Nevels.
I move, oh. Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve agenda item number 10.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill is on for a second, all in favor?
Long, Hino-Hosse Smith, Carol, Nevels, John, Matthew Hill in favor, none opposed the motion carries.
Okay. Item number 11, I'm going to let Ms. Owens read this into the record. Item number 11.
Thank you, Mayor. Consider approval of a resolution ordering a general municipal election to be held on May 6th, 2023, for council members place 1, 3, 5, and 7, and authorizing the mayor to sign and execute a joint election agreement with Dallas and Denton Counties. Thank you, Mayor and council, tonight, before you, as an order of the general municipal election for May 6th, as you can see in the memo that was attached to the packet, we are required to call an election for places 1, 3, 5, and 7. We are in the middle of the filing period, and if anybody would like to file candidacy ends on February 17th at 5:00 PM. We happy to answer any questions.
Can you give us an idea of what the filing process looks like?
Sure. So we have a candidate packet that includes the application for place on the ballot, and we also require that you file a campaign treasurer. All of those forms are out on the website, and I would, if you do come into our office, we do have those forms available for you as well. My office is open from 8 to 5, Monday through Friday. I'll be happy to answer any questions for anybody that would like to come in.
I have one more question.
Okay.
How were the languages that this, this is put into, how is that selected?
Sure. So that is based on census data, so based on the county's population and the census that came back, we are required to now file in Spanish and Vietnamese.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Council, any discussion? I'll accept a motion. Councilmember Nevels.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve agenda item 11.
Have a second from councilmember Long, all in favor?
Long, Hino-Hosse Smith, Carol, Nevels, John, Matthew Hill in favor, none opposed the motion carries.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Item number 12 is our city manager report.
Mayor, just have a few items. First of all, the intersection improvement project is substantially complete, and the design of the right turn lane into East Lake is continuing on. South Belt Line, continue with concrete paving work on the northbound lanes. If you've not traveled down there, okay, thank you, but it has actually moved pretty smoothly through that intersection and all the way through to 635. The Denton Creek grade control structure is substantially complete. If you recall, the Village Parkway pump station, there is a backup generator that is part of that project, and because of supply chain issues related to the generator enclosure and fuel equipment, there's still a delay moving to the summer of '23 as opposed to the spring. The pavement striping contractor is currently working on East Belt Line, and soon as that project is finished, they'll move to the school zones, so we'll be getting some updated striping there. Mayor, that's the, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Item number 13 are the mayor and council reports. I do have one big item that is relatively new, but for our fifth Tuesday, which will be January 31st, which is next Tuesday, we're going to be having a community conversation about Old Town. This is going to be talking about the future in Old Town, and everyone is encouraged to take part in that conversation. We'll be at the Capel Senior and Community Center at 6:00 PM next Tuesday, the 31st. Please come and share your ideas about what Old Town should look like with your city leadership. And as Ashley just mentioned, the upcoming election is now set for May 6th, 2023. That election filing period is through February 17th, and you can visit the election webpage or give her a call for more information. The Tri-Cities, which includes Flower Mound, Lewisville, and Capel, will be hosting a regional neighborhood summit from 8:00 AM to noon, Saturday, February 18th, at the Life Safety Park here in town. Free coffee and breakfast will be provided. RSVPs are required and can be submitted through the town of Flower Mound's website at flowermound, flower-mound.com. That's all the reports I have. The item 14 are the council committee reports concerning items of community involvement with no council action or deliberation. Item A is report on the Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD and Lewisville ISD from councilmember Mark Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight only have one update, and that's from Lewisville ISD. January is School Board Recognition Month, and every LISD campus helped decorate the boardroom with banners, posters, letters, and more. LISD announced its Campus Teachers of the Year. To see a complete list of all the winners, go to lisd.net backslash TOY, T-O-Y. LISD hosted its 30th Annual Martin Luther King Day Celebration. Winners of the essay art, photo, and sculpture contest were recognized at the event, and you can go to their website and see a list of all the winners. The district's Child Nutrition Department was recognized by the Texas Department of Agriculture for Farm Fresh Challenge to Eat Local, Teach Local, and Be Social. And then at the December School Board Meeting, the district approved its 2023-24 academic calendar, so if you're already making plans for summer and next year, the first day of school is Wednesday, August 9th, and the last day of school is Thursday, May 23rd. You can download a calendar at lisd.net backslash cal. And then we've got some important information sessions that are coming up on the 23rd Middle School STEM Academy Information Session, the 24th Career and Technology Parent Information Session at LISD Bowling Professionals Learning Center, the 24th Dual Language Parent Information at 6:00 PM via WebEx, and then the 26th Elementary STEM Academy Information Sessions, various times and locations. For details, visit lisd.net for details. Thank you.
Thank you. Item B is report on Capel ISD, councilmember Kevin Nevels.
Thank you, Mayor. No, main thing I want to talk about today is, I think a lot of people in the community are aware that CIS is exploring a bond, and put together a bond steering committee. Last night at the school board meeting, the community members Jim Walker and CHS student Dylan Patel presented the bond steering committee's recommendations to the Board of Trustees last night. Highly recommend you go to capelisd.com. If you weren't able to see or to attend the meeting, make sure you watch that video, just so you're aware. A couple of things to keep in mind, while they did present the findings of these bond steering committee last night, there are going to be a couple of dates that are coming up that I think are important. The school board is going to host a board workshop on February 6th that begins at 5:30, and then they're also going to discuss the bond and possible bond election at the regular Board of Trustees meeting on February 13th, and that begins at 6:00 PM. Make sure you go to capelisd.com/bond to get more information about that, and that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Item C is report on our Capel seniors from councilmember John John.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to mention that the, at the last month meeting at the senior center, councilmember Nevel was there, and do appreciate you being there, and as you recall, we had a very live discussion regarding the cashless transition. The seniors would like to take into consideration about the, some of those that still wants to pay cash at some of the facilities. And the members also enjoyed, the second thing is, members also enjoyed their first supper club trip to the Community Grill in Frisco. The members who are wanting to try new cuisines but are uncomfortable driving at night, they were able to go to that with the assistance. And next thing is, the AARP tax prep will return to Cosby Library beginning February 1st. This is a joint effort by, between Cosby Library and the Senior, Senior Community Center, and the senior advisory committee volunteers will provide the service and assistance to the community during the tax season, but you will have to contact the Dallas AARP office to schedule an appointment. And for the first time, Capel, Key Capel Beautiful Gardening and Education Class have come to Senior and Community Center. The classes are open to anyone in the community regardless of their membership at the senior center, and all the registration information can be found on the Community Experiences website. And the senior and community center team is placing an emphasis on the wellness in the new year, and members have had the opportunity to learn about Medicare, hearing loss, and receive B-12 shots in the facility. They are still asking about the indoor pickleball center as well, and that is all I have.
Thank you very much. Item number 15 are public service announcements concerning items of community interest with no council action or deliberation permitted. Do we have any public service announcements? Seeing none, we'll move on to item 16. There was no necessary action from the executive session, so seeing that it is 8:15 PM, there being no further business before this council, we are adjourned.